All right, it's six o'clock and so we're gonna start our market tense on twenty twenty five select board meeting. And I'm going to begin with our warrants. Uh, warrants, I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll number seventy three for twenty seven thousand seven hundred six dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
The chat is specifically for snowplow. We pay that monthly during the winter months. I'd like to make a motion that we accept accounts payable number seventy four for two thousand four hundred eighty eight dollars. And we move since do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'd like to move that we accept payroll number seventy five for one thousand nine hundred sixty four dollars and fifty two cents. Do I have a second? I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number seventy six for five thousand eight hundred sixty eight dollars and forty seven cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
All right, and that one is for um our annual swamp creek payment. I think we have a couple more payments before that is finally paid off and we're getting close. I'd like to move that we accept payroll number seventy seven for one thousand nine hundred sixty four dollars and fifty two cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
And lastly, I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number seventy eight for six thousand seven hundred twenty three dollars and forty seven cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No, no, I said that we have recesses.
Yeah, um, one of the the swamp creek payment came in late. And they give you like two days, you know, they mail something out and they say, oh, by the way, it's due tomorrow. It was yesterday, so um, okay, so we wouldn't pay late charges. As we went and did, so it was its own um accounts payable. All right, yep. All right, I'd like to move that we accept minutes from uh February twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, Kim, you need to stay because you weren't here.
That's right. Oh, I didn't stand on the stairs.
You were on the scene, you're right.
You were not here. You were not here from the team.
Politically, emotionally, mentally.
We won't leave you out of too much, though, I can bet you. All right, any citizens issues? You're gonna be up later, so you're on our list, but any other issues? Nope, okay, well, anybody there besides Charlotte?
No, it's Charlotte, Charlotte's on. Hi, Charlotte. Hey, Charlotte, hi, Charlotte.
Charlotte's the only one on.
Yeah.
Okay, any road update?
Just trucks hauling on those roads. And as it turns out, through coincidence, I talked to CEO about these trucks hauling to this particular job, he even damn checked it out and he put a cease and desist order on the job, as far as I know, he said he shut it down.
Good.
So hopefully no more trucks for a while.
Yeah, I've been noticing um as I'm driving down and it's like looking on his shoulders and stuff, it's like everything is just, it's all.
Bad idea for us to see all this rain last week, it's worth possible time to have a truck on the road. It means people know that it happens every year and they know the business, as those we know the business. It don't excuse for it. It doesn't matter integrity against my world, damn duty contractor.
Yep, yep, should know they shouldn't.
Do we have anybody with equipment stuck on the island right now that we know of?
Nothing at all.
No, uh, my husband sometimes has to be careful and time it with the frozen.
Yes, it was frozen when he was hauling up. Sure, when I left Saturday, saw it because it was frozen. Sunday, second loan was thirty eight degrees, I mean, I didn't have to fly in as it turns out. I didn't have to get involved in it all because I talked to Gary, go get him a signature and that's how it all unfolded.
All of our trucks are working right now, so uh if people, should people tattle to you if they see somebody on?
They'll me or call the sheriff, but you know, both.
Okay.
Because it's we're putting a lot of money into these roads. And we think if long journey down, if continues, we're never gonna have decent roads. You know, uh, that's all there is to it.
It's a pretty small, no, that there.
Yes, because you know, who knows how long it's gonna be longer this year than last year, that's no bad for that need for us. But you you plan on it, you just plan on it, it happens every year.
Right.
You know, it's it's not reinventing the way it was happened every year.
And these people who do this work for a living, no.
Yes, and my, one of my things is, that's the same problem, we had the same problem over here last week. These homeowners need to hire reputable people so that this does not you don't see Jack Shaw or anybody's trucks down here.
I know.
Milling around, why? Because it looks like the integrity.
So somehow or another, we need to let people know that when they're, I don't know how to add here.
All these, it's all, nobody like to try.
No, I think, you know, I think a lot of people don't realize.
When they're driving by your house and they're taking money out of your car. Your dollar, could be ten dollars, depends on how much damage they do to the road. I think I'd have a problem with it. So they should feel free, it's against the law. The problem is the enforcement mechanism for that law is.
It's mythical. Yes, it's complicated, yeah, yeah.
I I would just say something to advise is that like me from the premiere. Seeing those signs? So maybe Dunes or town board, who's only put road posted on air, you know, from this point down. We don't see that sign now, I like.
Yeah.
I I know every town is the same, like I see the same generic signs, so we. Yeah.
Both soon, in this pretty, you know. Maybe instructed by a ranch or something, I think.
Stop the trucks, no, as soon as they saw that, yeah, and I. As soon as you did it, we saw in Woolwich and then even down in the parks, they were a little slower, but they finally got there, the.
You and me and Scott, the first ones up. We were starting these cassettes, we're all Monday to.
Yeah.
I would have done it Monday, but the kind of people didn't say, look, you know, maybe one more day, one more day, that's it, two, I'll come down there.
At least they're working with you to, you know, so.
Most people go like, no, the excavator over on that, I'll pull that on the machine out there, I don't, I don't even think about turning it on that road.
All right, any committee report, any?
More good news surfaced today at the right landing house, the civic system is now to blow back up. So I shut off all water and shut the bathroom down today. We're gonna move our intern that's been doing work on standing, we're gonna move for either here or the gays house, most likely the gays house.
Yeah, we had to do that last year too.
And at this point in time, I don't have any whether it's an outside problem, whether it's more inside problem, but.
Or you.
Nothing that would help us stick a dynamite when you take care of.
Just to be very sure, okay, so what else do I get?
Uh, that's about it. Properties, so you know that the the old town hall is drained again. There's no water there until you want to go with any kind on April four, yeah?
Yes, yeah, and hopefully we can have water in the kitchen as well. Because we're gonna be making pancakes, so all of you are invited, uh even though you're from Booth Bay, welcome to join us, it's free. It could live in here, means you gotta get up. But.
More early anyway.
We have sausage and um pancakes and orange juice and fresh fruits out. So that's for anybody. All right, we're gonna go to select board business and we have um several items here, and I'm gonna begin with the first one, it says discussion and possible decision on the town hall repairs and rampeds. We did have a conversation at five o'clock with um Chris Mayette about the town hall repairs and rampeds, because he talked to um um several of the the bidders. Uh, we are not prepared to make a decision yet, we are actually um asking for uh references and pictures from um from the bidders, so um we have a month that we can give a response and we'd like to make sure that um we do our due diligence, so that we're putting that on hold.
Probably even the next one we meet.
Before, yeah, 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 yeah. All right, looks like there's another LPA, which I forgot what it stands for again, um limited, it says. Yeah, I had it written down. Um license application from Zara Vannacore. And if you want us me to spell that, um Charlotte, that is V A N A C four R E. And Sarah, you wanna talk to us about that?
Um, yeah, I'm just looking to move my oyster farm from the upper Sheep's Gate River above the cassette bridge down to here. Um, that those LPAs just got uh provoked by the state because of the homeowner complaints. Um, that it was too close to his mooring and impeded with his ingress and egress of his coastal property. Um, so unfortunately, those have to be moved off of the water by April thirtieth. Um, and if the state approves these other LPAs, um then I'll just move my product down there. So far, it's just two LPAs, um I'll probably stick with that this year. And then um we'll see what happens with it, but I'm in no means trying to, you know, be the next Mook Seafar or expand to this big operation, I'm just by myself trying to, you know, make a living off of working on the water. I've been in the industry for five years now, um and I'm looking just to be my own boss and do my own thing.
And I'm assuming that wherever you're gonna put these is not gonna be in anybody's way, so that we don't have the same problem that.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, I put them far enough away from land. Um, it's around a thousand feet away from shore. Um, still out of the way of lobstermen, a few lobstermen, from what I've heard, um put some traps around the rocks in that area, but um most of the lobstering occurs in the channel, which I'm three hundred feet away from that, so it seems like it would be um far enough away from any commercial fishing and um it's in deeper water, so it won't keep clamming. Um, so, yeah, yeah.
We do a lot of warming, right?
Yeah.
Um, it's just south of South Copper, I'm assuming it's south of Foul's Cove. Okay, um, you might, I know it's hard to relate to straighten it up, but it goes Foul's Cove.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any comments or questions from?
How do you pick your location? Um, so I actually did a study for my, I went to the University of Maine. Um, and I studied marine science with a concentration in aquaculture. And um I did my capstone project on optimal sites in the Sheep's Gate River for oyster farming. Um, I didn't test this specific location, but I did like kind of always have it in the back of my mind. Um, oysters can pretty much grow in any condition for the most part. Um, it just depends on how fast you want them to grow, uh the food and water flow. Solidity can play a role in there too, depending on how um briny you want your product to taste. Um, so I chose this specific site because it was out of the way of coastal homeowners, commercial fishing. Um, and it's kind of tucked in that little um area, yeah, where, you know, it's low enough for me, but not too low to where it's gonna impede with clamming and warming and then it's out of the channel, so most of the um lobstermen won't put traps in that area. So that's kind of why I chose that site.
That's very interesting, yeah.
Yeah, she knows a lot, plus. And um I went, yeah, came to Christie's. He's been sold for his education, right? You know, and we're just out here to show support for somebody that's not from the island.
How are you gonna access the islands? Um, I'm probably gonna use some of the public launches, um because I'm in Booth Bay, I'll probably use the Trevett launch, just so I can avoid the was casset traffic. Um, but I've used the was casset ramp um previously and I have my twenty four foot Carolina Skiff. Um, hopefully I'll be able to replace the motor for something newer, um so I don't break down in the middle of the water, but um, yeah.
I know, yeah.
See, so.
Yeah.
All right, any comments from any?
Yeah, I wanted to support, we're just here to show support, I actually talked to Sarah, we saw, we had no idea who she was. So um we saw the application, we're like, wow, what is this? Uh, so I reached out to her and we just chatted and uh, yeah, I'm just here to say it's important.
Which is really important, because um, you know, as as we've been talking, um you know, so far, all of you that have come, you know, you you small individual. Um, and we are starting to get a little concerned about to make sure that this doesn't become um a huge business, we want it to stay local.
Yeah.
So it's helpful that the three of you have come to support Sarah, um, because you know, we don't want a lot of competition and and we are concerned that big business doesn't come in here to to sort of take over, so um it's not us to make a decision on this, um but what we will do is it it'll be in our minutes that um if and I'm I'll make a motion that we um say that we support um your your implication. Um, so do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I know it's really for the the state to make that decision, but it may help to know that um that you have talked to us and that we're that you supported that, and it's actually nice to meet you in person.
Yes, thank you so much.
And I'm glad that you guys reached out to her as well, because it's just nice to have this conversation, so um you can hang around with us as we get into our other business, but um freedom goes totally up to you, we're we're an exciting bunch.
I'll I'll read the Minnesota.
Thank you for doing that, you know, he's.
Well, hey, thanks so much.
Cam on oysters, yeah, I um, you have to go out of oysters. So to have my freedom of office, so.
I find my oyster, it don't eat her.
All right, uh, on town committee policies.
Yes, so I have put some for you. Um, some updates to our town committee's policy, which we've had for, I think, a couple of years now. Um, first thing is just a minor addition, I put, I have a list of um committees that are formed by statutes, and I realized the conservation committee was missing, they are a state statutory. Uh, not required optional committee, um but I did add them to that list, a little further down. Um, committee actions, so we've learned a lot in the last year about um what committees can and cannot do for funding by state law. And to some extent by preference of the select board, so I just outlined a little more carefully here. Um, how committees get a budget, so that um committee chairs can read this and understand this is where you get funds if you need them, uh so the first thing is they request a budget in the town warrant and I put in there April fifteenth of each year to get that to me, because we gotta get it in the warrant. So I need to think about their costs for the next fiscal year. Um, I added that they should not be engaging in their own fundraising activities, as we've learned from our lawyer, the MMA. Um, that they can solicit donations via word of mouth to benefit the purpose of that committee, and those all have to go through the select board, um and perhaps the town hall, uh just give me the town meeting, it depends on um sort of what the donation is, but it really needs to go through select board and town meeting. Um, a little further down, we had a section on external communications, um basically saying, you know, committees are appointed to do a purpose, they should be meetings, talking to each other, but they shouldn't really be going out into the world without going through the select board, because they really speak for the select board and ultimately the town. Um, so I expanded on that a little bit, make it really clear, no one on the committee may speak outside of the committee, on the committee or town's behalf, without a majority vote first of the committee and permission from the select board, and if anyone does so, they're not speaking on our behalf um for the committee or for the town, and they can't bind us in any contract or grievance, so I just wanted to make that really crystal clear. Um, and and committee events, other than meetings require prior select board approval, that's not new, I just had to move it because the way I report reception. Um, and then a little further down, well, actually, in the appendix, made a couple of changes. To the Board of Appeals, we've been talking a little bit, we had someone interested in being on both appeals and planning. Um, and the select board has been discussing that and kind of seems like a conflict of interest, so I've added a sentence um per their discussions, addition, um it lays out the terms and everything, and then I added a final sentence, it says additionally that um members and alternates of the planning board, the CEO and his spouse, the CEO, CEO may not be members of the appeals board because the appeals board um hears appeals from the decisions of the planning board and the CEO. Um, previous to that, per state law, it already says municipal officers and your spouses cannot be um members of that board, so I added those additional things to avoid any interference or actual conflict interest. Um, under the cemetery committee, when we first put this together, I didn't know much about um these committees and the select board didn't, because we're all kind of new, so we had one sentence, maintain cemetery in West Portland, which is not totally inaccurate but not totally accurate, so we've learned a lot about the statutes and what we're required to do and what we're allowed to do, so I really wrote that up here and cited the cemetery statute, so basically we have to maintain veterans' graves in very old graveyards, eighteen eighty, established before eighteen eighty. So if we had any public graveyards, we would have to maintain the veterans' graves in there. We have to put flag holders and flags on veterans' graves every memorial day. And we are allowed to maintain uh the other graves in the ancient burial grounds, the old ones. So and maintain all ancient burial grounds, which I think is basically what this cemetery committee already does, so I added those things and cited that statute, because it's all very um, the cemetery stuff is very statutory, more than I have realized.
It's interesting, because I'm looking at what are required by statute. And I don't see a um committee on on cemeteries, yet we have responsibilities to.
Yeah, well, it's interesting, because it does say specifically in the statute, the select board can appoint a caretaker. They must, other towns have cemetery committees, so that they must look at that as a caretaker, I, you know. Um, so it's not required, we do have these obligations, a cemetery committee is not required, but obviously, it's a good idea, when you have seventy plus old cemeteries.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's not really changing anything they do, I just I'm trying more and more as we come across these statutes of why we actually do these things, to put it in the policy. So like new people coming in, yeah. And I believe it's. Yeah, that's actually.
I appreciate you doing, also, if somebody's interested in joining a committee, they can, they can look at, you know, the policies. So I'd like to move that we um accept the updates to the town's town committee's policy, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, April.
All right, next one is uh the town security policy.
Yes, and this one also, um, we've been having discussions around we don't really have any policy about who can have access to town digital things, um things like the wifi and um, excuse me, the Facebook page, and these are things we've kind of had to figure out, resolve as we went along. So we thought it'd be a good idea to just put it right, so we know. Um, and essentially the core of this policy, it's very short right now, but is that the three staff members will all have access to the main things, and that way, there's more than one person who has access, so for any reason, someone can't do it, someone else can, and we'll all know how to do it and we'll have the credentials, but really limiting most things to those three people. Because I think it's important that these passwords don't kind of float out into the world, and we're giving it to this volunteer, and then that volunteer flips, or they have a deputy, they get to the deputy, like, that can get really messy. Um, so we thought it was important to keep it pretty tight, so the three staff members um have access to Trio, which is our um software for all of our accounting, as well as the assessor's agent. Um, do you guys need to use Trio for any reason? I didn't think you did.
We've looked at a couple of things, but generally it's with um Ashley around, they actually.
Show them too.
Yeah, right, okay.
Uh, because I don't have you marked off here, I think that's probably good, because you don't want to be mucking around in there.
Unless you, maybe you don't have a reason just why I don't touch it.
Yeah, we could look at it, but but no, I think we're not making chat.
Much more there, maybe not for staff, so.
I think that, I think absolute discretion is probably.
Yeah. Um, Microsoft accounts, so obviously the select board gets those, we get those, code enforcement gets those, assessor's agent gets those. And nobody else right now, they're kind of expensive, so we don't do them for like committee chairs. Um, but maybe at some point we will, we have a Google account, which is how I run the website. Uh, a Google Workspace account, so the three staff at this point, no one else really needs it, we may want to shift from Microsoft to Google someday. Because it's a little awkward to have both, and Google's better, frankly, uh but it's a huge step, so we're not ready to do that right away, uh website kind of corresponds to Google, um Facebook, the three staff again. Um, electric sign, the three staff, we've had questions about that, we just um it's a delicate, public-facing thing, and we really need to keep it tight, so hopefully folks will understand, and if they want something on the sign, tell them to the staff, and we'll come to the select ultimately to figure out if it's an appropriate thing to do. If it's an emergency, you know, we'll put it right up and use our best judgment. Um, MailChimp, the newsletter, Zoom, um the staff and the select board and the committee chairs, so committee chair should know if you want to do Zoom meetings, um we can get you those credentials. And then we have an Adobe account, and actually, Ashley told me it's just me and her on it, so I'm gonna take off the Excise Agent, because I don't think there's any need for that.
What do you use Adobe for?
I use it a ton.
PDFs.
The annual report, I'm always, I am usually crazy, I don't want to live without it.
So yeah, so somebody sent me some documents when I was on my trip and I couldn't hold them because they were lost to Adobe with the account that I didn't have access to. Not that I really care, it was my PDF, but.
Why even ever answer, because it's just a PDF. Having access to the account means you can do all these fancy things to the PDF, and it's like kind of expensive, that's why only Ashley and I have it, because according to what you said, we really, really need it, use it.
Because you pay per license.
Yes, exactly, um, so we kind of expand that at some point and talk about it.
So it might be just a setting in that you guys don't have, have to think about everything, because yeah, it doesn't usually go out to the universe.
Yeah.
But you know, when next time you travel, you know, make sure you know what I.
Yeah, let me know and I'll see if I can hook her up.
Yeah, I think it was when you wanted the agenda, you couldn't get to it. Then I wound up having to send you a hard copy or something, because when I sent you the link, the LinkedIn.
LinkedIn, I couldn't open it.
Yeah, that's a Microsoft thing, that's Microsoft, yeah, those links can be tricky.
Okay, so basically, um the select board has access to to Microsoft and and Zoom. And just like we don't have access to keys for any of the staff, we don't have um access to a lot of the things that the staff do, because that's their responsibility. So um, we have talked about this and and we're in agreement with this, I believe, so I'd like to move that um we uh accept this town digital security policy, uh do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Is that what it's called? Digital security?
Okay, yes.
Okay, yes. Well, if you ever want to get text out and there's, you'll get new access to the things you need access to. You seem to manage.
Uh, next on the agenda, um, is to appoint Adam Weber to the cemetery committee. He's been on the committee and I think just didn't get renewed. So I'd like to move that we, um. Point Adam Weber to the cemetery committee. Um, his term will expire June thirty, twenty twenty five. So this is basically finishing up the year.
They're gonna do a lot of work in the spring, the Memorial Day and stuff, so it's important, everyone gets. Pointed and gets sworn in, so that they're insured.
Right, since they're playing up in, uh, where's it, seventy one?
Seventy something cemetery.
Yeah, I think seventy one cemeteries. So, um, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Give them a second. Hmm, right, um. April?
Oh, um. Thirty day benefits waiting period for new hires. So this was, uh, our MMA insurance representative. Uh, suggested this. You have a thirty day waiting period for. One of our policies, I think it's dental, she was like, it's kind of random. You don't have thirty day waiting period for any of your other ones. Um, and Ashley concurred, it makes sense because otherwise you would have to be like, to, yeah, deducting. Uh, I don't, I don't know, not, it's the reason I'm not the finance person, but you need some time to like build up a paycheck before you get deducted. So anyways. Uh, Debbie and Ashley seem to think thirty day on across the board for new hires is a good. Thing, and it's also like a testing waters, and if it doesn't work out, then you have to undo a bunch of benefit stuff.
And I think for it to happen, now that makes, that's very common.
Yeah.
So do we need to prove?
Yeah, and actually, um, if you want to make a motion to have thirty day waiting period for all. I guess employee benefits. Would probably be the best way to word it.
Okay.
Without having to list them all out.
Yep. So I'd like to make a motion that we, um, approve as part of a policy. That we, um, have a thirty day benefits waiting period for all new hires for all employee benefits. Did you catch all that?
I didn't think.
So, all right, and all in favor?
All right.
All right, a couple of quick updates, and I don't know, do you want to, uh, share the last Wednesday's? Meeting was casted? Since we talked about.
And one again, and, uh, we did have an opportunity to speak, the, 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 uh, head of the. Transport station wasn't there, some of the other department heads were there at this meeting.
This was that one, didn't miss cast it to speak to their.
Um, nobody really, really discussed much, but, um. So yeah, so the, uh, the department head wasn't there for the transfer station, but, um, Clarisha Stone from Alna, the, uh. The select person there, um, was able to speak to them at least and present, um, her findings today and, um. She explained it very well, I thought, and sort of left it very open, but. Um, and that was it. Nobody said anything, nobody commented, it was just thanks and we left, so.
Yeah, there's absolutely no comment other than thank you.
But with that said, going forward, I still think it's something that we should be sort of. Thinking about, looking into, because I don't know what's gonna happen if, uh, if Alna doesn't, um, stay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because it's just gonna be us then, and I don't know if that's gonna affect our costs, so.
That should, well, sure.
We kind of need to be prepared for that, I think. So we need to look at, um. Start looking at options or sort of gathering information on kind of where we are on the.
Yeah, and Clarisha has done a whole lot of research and is gonna share that with us and, um. I, I feel like we need to wait till after. The town.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but to really stop. Yeah.
To do some, where it's not an emergency, it's just, you know, add it to, add it to the plate.
Yeah, I'm looking at, you know, I, I'm interested in looking at what. Like what percentage of our population today has garbage pickup?
Right.
Versus how many go to the transport station. Right, exactly.
So curbside, you know, fifteen thousand dollars more than that, that's not such a bad deal now.
Yeah.
Looking at it like that.
Yeah, and, um, basically from what we saw two weeks ago, is it looks like their, um. Their costs are gonna go up about fifty thousand dollars, that's not guaranteed or or whatever, but that's what we saw, so that will. Have a big impact, especially if, um, Alna, um, doesn't continue to to use their services, so. Um, but, but we did go two weeks in a row to to try to at least, um, let them know that, uh, Westport Island is.
Yeah, yeah.
I got two things too, I gotta add.
Okay.
Uh, when you're ready.
Yep, let me do the, uh, next two and then I'll come back to you. Um, there was a, um. A meeting, a Zoom meeting today for Phidam Fiber, um, which is with Consolidated and, um. I don't know if you all, I'm sure you, if you've been up or down the island, you saw somebody's doing something. Well, um, I'm thrilled about it. Because I've been sort of waiting for that, but, um, and I did talk to the fellow who happened to be. Right next to my property, and they did say that they had walked all the way down to the drop line, and I actually. Just to confirm that, I went out the other day, um, and saw the footprints in the snow. So they did come all the way down to the drop line, so they are, uh, what I did learn today is that, um. Westport Island was not included in part of the grant, which I did not know, but it is Lincoln County. So what they have committed to is coming, they said about the top two thirds of the island. I've seen them pretty far down the island. Um, but they did not go all the way down the island, so, um, but.
Is this to be a competitor with, um.
Yes.
So there'll be two companies.
Yes.
That's serving most of the island.
Exactly, yeah, which I'm thrilled about because to me, when you have competition, we get better pricing, and they did ask. Questions and none of this is, um, set in stone. If you are interested, you need to register, I just found that out today. And he said that they're not gonna wait till it's all done. Once the, the wires are laid. They're gonna start to make the changes, so that everything isn't happening all at one time. So I'm gonna do some research myself. Um, uh, and also that, um, if you have. Um, my understanding is that for some people, if you have spectrum and the power goes out, you lose. Your internet. Uh, that won't be the case.
Really?
With, with this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, and he's. Somebody asked about price, and he said for a hundred over a hundred. Which is your base, uh, price was about forty five dollars. And and go on their website if you're interested. I know, um. I'm not sure, I haven't had time to do. Uh, upload speed and, uh.
That means nothing to me.
And it's, it's a lot.
Good?
Yeah, 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 I agree with them.
I'm so not. Are they taking the applications right now for?
Yes.
He moved it up already, he said, yeah, you can pre.
Yeah, this, and and I didn't have time, this, this meeting was from three to four, I didn't get out till after four, so I did not have time. Because I wanted to go look on their website, he said there are two places to look, phidiamfiber.com. And there's one place that you can, um, sort of pre-register that to show your interest, and then if you want to have expedited service. Which means while they were doing it, if you told them that they would make sure it goes all the way to your house, which I didn't know. Um, they did talk about, um, seasonal disconnect, since a lot of our folks are seasonal. That, um, they would allow that for up to six months, so, um. And there's also Lifeline available, which I'd like to learn some more about, um, that I did not know about, that. Especially with more and more, um, people who are living here alone. So people like Jimmy can have Lifeline without actually knowing they have one or none. Exactly, exactly, so it, it's where you can call for an emergency and. I, I need to do some more research because they talk about if you qualify, and I'm not sure how qualifications are taken, so. But I just want to give that update because that was just today. Um, let's do April meeting schedule and then we'll come back to, um. To Jim, so, um, I think we talked about starting in April that we would be. Every week for our board meeting.
Oh, sorry, I was signing on. We're, uh, we're doing.
I have a photo with on that, is that the very scheduled April? And and it, it's not really, we need to meet, but not necessarily for board meetings.
Right, so I've been a lot of workshops.
Yeah.
To work on stuff, so I think it's.
Okay, so for April, our board meetings, we will plan to meet. Let's see, we meet on the twenty.
Seven and twenty one?
Seven and twenty one. And still at six o'clock?
Yeah, and your workshops now are Monday before you meet.
Yeah, Monday from five to six.
Tuesday.
People, Tuesday from four to six and Wednesday. Just to help us get through some of the issues related to the warrant, um. So Wednesdays is is challenging for me.
Yeah.
Now off it runs, and yeah, so Tuesdays, so, yeah, if we could do Tuesdays three to six and seven, four to six, or.
Tuesdays are really hard for me because I have to, I get interrupted because I have to conserve us, um. So Wednesday would be better if we want to do, like, not do Tuesday, do a long session, session Wednesday or Thursday is our plan. I usually hear it at six, those days. Um. Earlier, earlier is just, three o'clock is scratching for me, I mean, if I can, I can, but I'm not always back. I'm about to jump out then. Which day is bad for you to, all of them or you work, so.
Monday and Tuesday are good ranges, so Monday and Tuesday I stay pretty close.
Right.
But I need to, um. Maybe we could do Monday, Thursday, we go back to the Thursdays, which you have used.
Thursdays are good, Mondays aren't good because we don't work, unless I come to the meeting, I come to this workshop.
Yeah, and Mondays are just good for us to give that hour ahead of time to just talk about issues like today, meeting, um, and. Two weeks ago, we met with Stacy, and so it's an opportunity to sort of meet with some people as well, so we're gonna switch it to Thursdays. So, but you're still thinking that we need three days a week? Or we could do it longer, we just need to get through.
We're trying to dedicate, we'll, uh, try to, to the warrant. Um. That's the key thing, so.
And and you know, what was happening the past few weeks, it seemed like everybody was going to.
Yeah.
Different issues, so we were trying to.
That's why we added the second day. To have a special one that was like.
A warrant.
You don't, you don't end up bleeding over because it's so easy, if you're trying to be like, okay, the last hour will be for the warrant, you end up. Taking up that last hour with some stuff, it just.
So, but I feel like we're out of place now that we could really concentrate just on them more, I don't know of anything else that's coming up. You know, the, the issues that we have related to town properties and whatnot are really all. For Warren, and so to me would be part of that discussion, so with Thursday, this. We have to commit because I know Thursday, the twenty of.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you have anybody scheduled to this, to tomorrow?
No, no, so we can, we can hit it tomorrow.
Let's set it tomorrow and then, um, and we'll tell you when we finished it.
If you end up getting really busy and we can't get to the warrant, then we'll schedule a second time.
Yeah, I don't.
Everyone can't be there, it's not the end of the world.
Right.
We can still put it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay, so, um.
So we won't do Wednesdays for now, we'll go to Tuesday. Do we still want to do four to six?
Let's do four to six tomorrow and talk about.
Okay, and just see how.
Yeah, and and you look at your schedule. Um, we'll go, come in there, but. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'll just put it out there, if it is ever possible to move to Wednesday or Thursday. You will get Ashley and I's undivided attention, but, you know.
Tuesday's a long day.
Tuesday's a long day and it's hard because I'll get interrupted, I'll have to do three dog licenses.
Do you want to swap Tuesday for Wednesday?
If you, if people could, that would definitely be better, both.
What are you saying?
I'm fine with that.
So not tomorrow, but make it Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Or you, you still want to do tomorrow?
Scrap Tuesday.
It's, it's scrap Tuesday, almost Wednesday. And if we can.
Wednesday, Thursday, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so no, no meeting tomorrow. Okay, get them when I look at my bush. Like that, by now, I'll let you know. Okay, so I'll, but I'm gonna delete it. Okay. Okay. Delete. No meeting tomorrow. How gives you a sound? All right, um, Jen.
Somebody wanted to land, put that through my vaults. There's the number of the speed trail that shares.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe one of you did.
No, I did. Don't you send it to me. I centered everybody.
Well, I don't know if you see, we're gonna pay and arrange transportation from the biggest fan.
Yeah.
To here, well, that's fine if it's the cash, but it's probably not gonna be, it's probably gonna be. Van Buren or someplace, you know. But it is available through main local roads. The other thing is more of a comment. I was shocked when I read in the paper. Knowing the fifty thousand dollar tax increase last year. That the county is following that up this year with a twenty nine thousand dollar increase. Uh, just seems.
That's better than last year, though.
That's true, but now we're gonna add it to last year's, and now that adds up to seventy nine thousand dollars in two years for. See the point.
We know, do we have, when do we get that? We don't have any discretion, it's basically like.
I think, oh, no, no, it was just the other day, it didn't really something came that's, just came out, um.
Yeah.
I. Yeah, I don't remember what, yeah, it just, something.
She sent us, sent us our, our numbers, and that, that our, our values went up fifty five million dollars. From, from, uh. Yeah, I don't know, that's our event budget. The R S U twelve budget?
No, from the, from the county, from Michelle Richardson, she sent us an email, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, 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 and she had the, the chart, and she showed, she even mentioned in her email, Westport Island.
Because our values went up fifty five now.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I looked at it a week or so ago, so I don't remember now what, uh, but yeah.
But no, we do have a, we do have a, I don't know what happened this year, we missed it this year, but we have a, a, um, I went last year. To the whole budget presentation, and the towns, the representatives from each town are there and can discuss the, the. Highs and lows and everything in between, so you do have an opportunity for input, maybe from a town, but, but as. As it stands, not, there was, it was almost nobody there.
Large budget that is approved or disapproved by a very small number of people.
Yeah.
Well, one of them we know very well, who probably kind of explains.
I can credit for that.
Yep.
It's like I've never seen a county commissioner come to just a random select one meeting.
Yep, we could definitely ask, um, um, ask him to come, maybe when we do our, um.
When the R S U comes, it might be good to sort of, yeah, have it all, it's be like a big budget thing and.
Or, or maybe when we have our, um, our open meetings that we're talking about having in May, it might be.
Could we look at it?
Yes.
That's cool, that's, that's taken off.
I just have one more thing before, before we go to, um, the staff, uh, announcement, and that is that, um. We did have our audit, and we just met last week to, um, to, to have sort of like the closing. Um, discussion with the auditors, and they were extremely pleased with, um, all the work that, uh, Ashley is doing. There were no issues, um, we have to write a final closing and, um. And that happened in the next few days and, but, uh, it went very, very well. They had no issues, um. But I'm really wishing, any thoughts from you two?
Yeah, that was pretty, pretty good, this is straightforward, yeah, I mean, it was, it was kind of a clean year, I think, this.
Um.
Ashley's right on top of things.
She is.
She keeps it very.
Yeah.
Right on top of it, so.
Yeah, what 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 Dean, one of the auditors said about Ashley's issue, was it you that said it or she said it, that if she does, if she's. She's not, if she doesn't know, she's not afraid to say, I don't know, but I'll find out, you know, so Dean, yeah. Dean, like.
I don't think she has to go back and change much, I think she, that's right, as she goes along.
Yes.
She makes sure, but as she goes along.
Right.
No, and she's she's taking courses, in fact, I was just looking to see when the the basic municipal budgeting courses and um. We'll be sitting in on that, we're we're gonna be doing it here, so that um we don't have. Don't put this in your um, in your article, um. Charlotte, but um we're gonna be sitting in with Ashley, she paid for the course, but uh we'll just sit with her and uh take the course. So it'll be an all day, um basically, just to sort of wrap our own heads around this.
When is that?
It's on the twenty fourth, it's called basic municipal budgeting.
That's that's your meeting day, are you sure it's the twenty fourth, really? What time?
It's all day.
It's like.
Nine thirty to three thirty or something like that.
Yeah, it's it's an all day, um.
I'm kind of interested to just. I feel like I.
Sounds good.
So in the dark, on the numbers side, I'd like to get a little better, even though it's not my.
Yeah, we took it last year, um, both Lisa and I did, but it it was. Not well organized, and so we both gave feedback, and we're hoping that this year will. That if they listen to us, then uh we're hoping it'll be better than what it was before. So, um, final things, we have uh two things for staff announcements, we have um, R S U twelve has a budget presentation. Uh, at our next meeting, so pretty much that'll um be a a a nice presentation from um. Howard Turtle and um and his team, and so that, um. Maybe you can put that on the side.
I will, yeah, it's going in the newsletter, I'll go on the side, I'll go on Facebook, I'm gonna start um. Advertising that really soon and public is very much welcome and encouraged.
Absolutely, and the last um thing is our announcement about nomination pick.
Yes, so nomination papers for our municipal election, which is gonna take at least on June tenth. Um, are now available, and um the two positions are road commissioner and select board one. Uh, Donna has taken out papers, she is running for her seat again. And Jim has taken out papers, he is running for commissioner again, so we have. Two sets of papers taken out.
Thank you.
Um, and the deadline to return them is April eleventh, um so, just wanna spend it out, but wanted to put that out there.
Alright, any signatures?
I need a few more, I haven't read.
I'd be happy to sign yours.
Or it.
Okay, good.
Yes, I'm sorry. Sign me ten, cross it out.
I have nine for around you.
Yeah, alright, if there are no other um. Bits of information or uh issues, then I'd like to move that we adjourn the meeting, do I have a?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.